Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We have a nice crowd here today, so I'm sure one of you are bound to take this little cute dog home. It's a female terrier mix. She was a stray. She's going to be available for adoption on Tuesday, June 6th. So she'd make somebody a lovely pet. So if you're interested, Tuesday, you can come down to our dog kennel and pick her up and take her home. And there, we have lots of dogs available. So if this isn't the type that you like, we'll find one for you. Okay, our thought for the day, it is far more impressive when others discover your good qualities without your help. No bragging. Okay, Teresa, you're up.
Number one on the agenda is determining to proceed with the construction of sanitary sewer number 112, Rolling Heights, within Lorraine County General Sewer District, Sheffield Township.
Do we want to have Jerry or anyone speak on this matter?
Commissioner, we're actually done with the public hearing, so there's no swearing or testimony. So you can proceed as you see fit to address the issue.
Because this is not EPA mandated, and the story behind this sewer project was someone went to the residents and told them that there was going to be grant money available for this project, and come to find out there is not. And the people in this area are going to have some pretty steep assessments, which I know most of them can't afford. I also had a problem with the fact that Ohio Edison has property along this area that is not going to be assessed. And I asked Mr. Cortez to get in contact with them to see if something could be done about that. I personally am not in favor of this project. I know we've invested a lot of money in engineering and things like that, but the county can't afford to eat that, but I don't think the people of this area can afford to pay the assessments either without any grant money available. That's my opinion. Commissioners? Eddie Ted, anything?
No, again, like you said, we have a ton of money tied up into this, and it's a petition sewer. No, I got it on. Can't hear me? I'm sorry. I normally speak pretty loud. We've got a ton of money tied up into this already on the petition sewers. And I know that per Commissioner Kokowski, that Jim is working with First Energy to see if we can get any participation in helping this get done. I think it's still a need. We've got it out to possibly 40 years, correct, Jim?
That's correct, Commissioner. We can take the bond issue from 20 years to 40 years, and that would lower the overall annual fee for the assessment.
And I'm not sure where we've done on the LMI, load of moderate income on this totally, and what monies are available.
Rebecca Jones is here, and she could better address that.
Yeah, can you help us with some of the LMI issues on this, Rebecca?
I believe that with the LMI, there's always the possibility of using some of our 2006 CDBG formula money to help either with the tap-ins or potentially to help lower some of the costs. So that would be something that, I know we just got our request in for the 2006 formula year. It does look like we're going to have a little bit of money out of that program to put into sewers, if that would be where the commissioners would like to put some of that money. So I think there will be some funds. It's not a huge amount of money, but there will be some funds, either to help with the tap-in or to help with lowering the cost.
Rebecca, with Rebecca, can you stay there for a second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
When we were doing the Broadway Taylor sewers originally, we didn't think there was any grant money available for that. And then we did find grant money. Any possibility here?
We did find the CDBG water and sanitary sewer would fit for that area. We would have to go in and do an income survey, and then we would have to determine whether or not the cost of the water and sewer combined equals 2% of the median household income. Amherst was a little unique because the city of Amherst was charging such a high fee for the sewer rates in that township area. So that brought the cost of the monthly water and sewer bill up significantly. We would have to take all of those things into consideration, but it's certainly something that we would be willing to research.
Would that just be '06 money? Ken, you said this would start in August. If it got approved today, when would it finish up? I'm addressing Ken Carney, our sanitary engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Morning. On the package, you'll see a bid project award and start construction in November of 2006.
And finish in June of 2007. We have '07 funds available by any chance, Rebecca? Sorry to keep getting up and down like church.
Yes, we could, when we apply for the FY '07, the application will be due in July of '07, and we could put that in as a use for those funds.
So we could use '06 allocation and '07 allocation?
We may be, yes, we may be able to use portions of both. I think some of the '06 may be used towards the Broadway Taylor as well. So I think we're kind of looking at trying to help in that area with tap-ins. So we would have to see how many tap-ins we would have and how we could divide that up. But it could be done over the two-year period, yes.
Because there is definitely a need for sewers out there, I'm not sure where our Health Department is with, or not the county Health Department, with renewing the permits for the sanitary systems. I still think it's a needed project. It's been petitioned, it's been on the plate for about 20 years now, I guess. Commissioner Blair?
A couple of questions to Mr. Ennis. Effective January 1st, there's new legislation. I believe that mandates the General Health District to have annual inspections of sanitary sewer septic systems. Can you comment on that? Or do you, can you tell us what you know about it? Because this is something new that's coming to Lorraine County. I just want the public to be aware of it.
Well, I'm not completely familiar with that legislation. It's kind of Mr. Kiersey's area. I do know that that legislation is going into effect, and the Health Department has indicated that they are going to abide by that and start enforcing that. So my understanding is they would be conducting regular inspections. I do not know the details of that. Whether that's some kind of random thing. I don't believe they're going to be inspecting every septic system in the county, although I think probably on some kind of rotating basis, they'll set up a plan to do that. But yeah, there's going to be inspections, and if the septic systems are not in compliance, they'll be required to bring them into compliance.
And Mr. Carney, do you have any documentation from the Lorraine County General Health District with respect to this particular area and its septic systems in general?
No, we don't, Commissioner, because this particular project was a petition project, and once they met the 62% required to initiate council or commission action, it was not based on the condition of any research on the Health Department. Petition projects don't require that.
Thank you, Ken. As noted by Commissioner Kahlo, the county has expended considerable dollars on the bringing this project to readiness today. We've been given a figure of $161,505 with some bills that haven't been submitted yet. I understand the high cost. I'm concerned that we'll find ourselves in a similar position in a year or two now if we don't take action at this point in time. I have a septic system, and I understand where you're coming from. I really do. And what's interesting to me is that a majority of the residents of this area petitioned for this project. And at the time that the petitions were circulated, I had conversation with one of your trustees, who's no longer in office, and I believe this was the last project in Sheffield Township to be sewered. And if this were finished, then Sheffield Township is completely sewered. And that's really an accomplishment for any township, certainly one in Lorraine County.
I've heard it mentioned by everyone here that this sewer was petitioned, but they were petitioned under false pretenses of having grant money available. So if they took a recon of those petitions now, knowing what the assessments are, you wouldn't have the 60-some percent that you need to have the petition, because I don't think anybody would sign it today.
So where does that leave us legally, Jerry?
Well, if, okay.
I think he's thinking yet. He hasn't started his thinking. He's just thinking.
That's a factor that the commissioners are permitted to and should consider in reaching their decision. If the commissioners truly think that there was fraud in the inducement in getting these signatures signed, then the commissioners have the authority to turn it down on that basis.
Where does that leave us? Where does that leave us on the $160-plus thousand that is owed to the general fund for the project?
Assess this for that. You can assess me for nothing, you can assess him for that.
Jim had asked me a question on that. It's my understanding that we can only assess according to benefit, but I would have to research to see if there is some way to assess the cost without actually putting the sewers in. I can't answer that at this point.
Commissioner Kahlo, you asked me a question on some rates on some bonds, and I have that.
Right, the cost per thousand on 40 years.
I have that for you now. 20 years is 80, roughly. These are, you know, given current rates and things change. $87 per thousand for 20-year, $72 per thousand for 30-year, and $66 per thousand for a 40-year.
So we're looking at the average assessment?
$12,000, $13,000, probably.
Somewhere in that area.
It appears to me that, you know, going for 40 drops the assessment, the annual assessment, down by about a third.
By about a third?
Maybe a little less than a third. Let's say 25%, 25 to 30%.
We're looking anywhere from $13,000 to $20,000, unless there are really large lots, you know, a couple of lots, $13,000.
Yeah, the easy thing is you save $25 per thousand.
Yeah. So it's about, I would say on the average, $800 a year.
Could be.
Somewhere in that area.
So you're saving $800 on what?
Per lot. $800 a year in their taxes, broken down over a 40-year assessment. That sound about right numbers-wise?
I would have to defer to Mr. Carney on that. Ken, did you get those numbers I just gave to the commissioners?
At $66 per, these are about what, between $13,000 and $18,000?
An average of?
An average of?
$14,800.
Correct. So $15,000 times 66?
Dutton Road is a neighborhood of $140 per foot with a lateral cost of $6,400 each. Each individual lot has its characteristics, but the tentative assessment list is in the package. But you're right, there's a varying range.
Yeah, there's a lot of difference in size assessments based on the frontage.
Between 13 to 22, depending on the frontage and width. But that figure I used, $146 per foot plus $6,400 per lateral is very accurate, and you can determine the width of the lots accordingly.
I guess generally speaking, if you went from a 20-year bond to a 40-year bond, you can look at about a 30% reduction on the figures that are presented per assessable property.
Rebecca, can you come back up for a second? Should the commissioners decide not to pass this today, could you still go and do the income eligibility for the grant?
Yes.
For this project?
Yes, we could.
I would not be in favor of this unless we got grant money and Ohio Edison paid their fair share of their front footage and not put the burden of that on these taxpayers.
I have had, I'm having discussions with Ohio Edison. They're a very large corporation and part of First Energy, I believe. I'm trying to work through corporate and, you know, work my way up to decision-makers. I'm not indicating to them that they should pay an assessment. I'm indicating to them that they should relieve some of the burden on the community as a goodwill gesture to the residents over there. Now, it's going to take a while for me to get movement on that, and I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that they'll see it as a way to be a good corporate citizen over in Sheffield Township, because clearly the law does not allow us to assess public utilities. I'm just saying that for everybody's consumption out here.
They can afford it more than these people, I'll tell you that.
So what are our options here, Jerry? Yea, nay, and table? Or yea, nay, and?
Basically, if you want us to?
Well, you have yea, nay, table, and you can also, well, it wouldn't be a continue because the hearing's over, but if you want to wait on the First Energy piece, on the utilities piece, so we don't have to go through a whole thing of sending all these letters out again, well, I guess we'd have to send them again, wouldn't we?
We'd have to start the whole process again?
No, we could, could we not continue this to a date certain?
Without having to start a process all over again?
No, you would, just at the date of decision. We're at the date of decision. We have to notify.
I think we decided it would be best to send everything out again.
Right. What happens, anybody that filed an objection, you have to notify them date of decision. We've just adopted a policy where we notify everybody affected. This way, nobody gets left out in case an objection letter was missed. It's just keep us legally correct and leave no loose ends. So my question to council is, can we make that statement of a date of decision publicly now and not have to go through that whole thing again? If that's part of, one of the decisions that's going to be considered here?
No, you just want to consider all our options.
We will have to notify those who have objected.
So we have to send the letters all over again?
No, that's not what you're saying.
Well, not necessarily everybody, but certainly to those that have objected. How many are we talking?
What if you print and let all of them?
So that goes to show you that the people that signed the petition originally would not sign it today if all of them have objected. This is not EPA mandated.
Well, it's not EPA mandated, but based upon a projection from the residents, the county, in the spirit of cooperation in delivering community services, expended almost $165,000 in pursuit of what we requested to do.
Right.
We need to go back on the person that went around and got him to sign a petition and told him a lie.
I, well, I'm not disagreeing with you, Commissioner.
That's a moral, that's a moral thing. I don't think that's anything to do with us legally, though.
It's, you know, again, I'm not, I just need to point out that we have $165,000 of general fund money that needs to be recovered on this project, and it was expended by request.
I understand that. Rebecca, how long would it take for you to do that income-eligible survey to find out if we can get any grant money for the sewer project?
It would depend on how many residents. I would have to have a list of all the residents, and we would have to arrange a time to go out to the homes. And depending on the number of homes in the area, the state would require a certain percentage of those to be surveyed. We could probably do the survey if we have 100 or fewer homes. We could probably do it in a weekend. But if we have more homes than that, then it would take us a couple of weeks to get that done.
The last survey we did, we had assistance from the township.
Correct, the township.
And we worked very cooperatively with them, and they were more familiar with the residents. So when we had a little bit of a problem, sometimes people just don't answer the door when they see you there. And we can't, if we can't gather the information, we can't do the survey correctly. My understanding, though, is that there wasn't going to be a significant amount of CDBG that would be available for this project, even if we do the survey.
I'm sorry.
My understanding was we weren't going to have a significantly large portion of CDBG money available for this project.
Correct.
Okay, so I just don't want to, they've apparently been there before.
They just don't have, there's nothing to do.
Right.
Okay, were you talking just about 2006? Because Rebecca was questioned about 2007 as well.
Right, there's, you know, there's always the potential, the project won't be done until 2007. I know that as we've worked on the Amherst Township project, we are going to commit some $2,007 to tap in for those residents. So that may have an impact on what's available in '07.
Right, my understanding is that a lot of that money's going to be exhausted. And then the second thing is, if we don't, if we wait on a decision too long, all our cost data is going to have to be redone.
Cost data that we have expended dollars for or what she's doing?
Yeah, you won't, no, what we expended, you won't have to re-engineer the project. Any engineering is going to be the engineering, but we'll have to spend some money to go back and relook at all the tabulation sheets and figure it into, you know, current pricing. It's slightly dated as it is. This project's been long in the works. So I just need to indicate that to you. Once again, I'm just trying to give you information for the decision.
Also, commissioners, I would like to let you know, too, that the CDBG water and sanitary sewer grant, the application is out now. They will be accepting applications beginning July 1. It is competitive, and once the money is spent, there will be no more money until 2007. So it would be important for us to try to get this in as quickly as possible. So, you know, hopefully we would have all the necessary documentation to apply fairly quickly.
Well, Rebecca, to apply for that, though, it has to be an approved sewer project, correct?
Yes. It has to be water or sewer, or both.
Any idea what those funds normally are when you're saying it's a competitive process? I mean, the amount of dollars available or what they normally award towards a project?
The maximum amount that can be awarded is $500,000, but it has to be leveraged. There has to be committed leverage dollars to the project. And the amount that the state issues on an annual basis, I believe this year we're looking at about $8 to $10 million for the entire state of Ohio. So, and Lorraine County can only apply for two in the 2006 funding cycle.
Can only apply for?
You can only apply for two. You can only receive, apply and receive two grants per year. That's the maximum. So if Lorraine County is applying for Broadway Taylor and we would apply for this, we would not be able to apply for any more after that until 2007. And that's assuming that the fund is still available in 2007. As we all know, with the CDBG cuts, that may be something that is not available in the future.
Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to table this or whatever term you want to use until we find out about the grant money and the Ohio Edison property.
Rebecca, the timing, we got the survey done and we submitted within the specified timeframe. When would we suspect we would have an answer?
CDBG water and sanitary sewer, we can receive an answer usually within 30 to 45 days. So it would be fairly quick once we got everything into the state.
But you would need the LMI done and our approval of the project, correct?
Yes, and we would need?
And what else?
To have the funding sources committed. We'd need the third-party cost estimates. We would need other documentation like readiness to proceed. This may, it's on a point system. We may lose points because we do not have findings and orders from the EPA on this project. So that may be something that would lose us points. So what we would do in our department first is, once we identify that it's income-eligible and that the cost of the water and sanitary sewer would equal the 2%, then we would go through and determine pretty quickly whether we even have enough points to apply.
I guess simplifying this, the way I'm hearing you, is that we can't apply for a grant until the commissioners vote on this project.
That's not what she said earlier.
Until funding is committed, until we have some sort of commitment of funding, yes.
Which means we would have to approve the project to commit funding to it.
We're not committing any funding, are we?
Well, if we're applying for the grant, we need to commit to funding.
You have to have a project to apply.
Yes.
You can't say we want to do a project and apply.
Yes.
So you have to have a project to apply.
You have to have an approved project to apply for the funding.
Right, right.
Not yet to give the funding, we'll do the project.
And I think, you know, I think if the commissioners passed a resolution approving for the application, that would be the commissioner's commitment. I'm not sure what Ken's other funding sources are, whether this was going to be completely bonded. I guess, you know, I'm not sure what the other funding sources were.
I understand, and I don't mean to be overly inquisitive on this, but the, I thought you said that the funding, the additional funding absent the grant would have to be committed to. And the only way to commit to that is to vote on the project.
Right, to approve the project.
Okay.
All right, so?
Okay. Yeah, it's kind of a?
I'm just trying to make it simple for me.
And that?
So in order to make sure we have the proper funding lined up, we have to know what we're doing with this project.
Right.
Right, we can't apply for the money unless we approve the project and say it's a viable project, because then we're committing funding to get it started.
I thought you said as long as we had a resolution, like a letter of intent or something like that, or necessity?
And I could clarify.
But that wouldn't identify the funding.
That wouldn't commit the funding.
I could clarify that with the state if you would like, just so that we're not, so that we're certain about what it is that the state would require of the county as far as commitment of funding. I know with the other one that we're doing, we have some OPWC dollars, there's some issue $2.
But on the other one, we went ahead with the project.
Right. Yes, you're going to do the project with or without the money. That's correct.
Right, so, but we were able to apply to the state because we had a commitment of funding because we went ahead with the project.
Well, everything I've read, it's my understanding, is once we commit to the project, then we can go find dollars to help with the project.
Yes.
Without committing to the project, there's nothing to ask for. Ken?
Gets a little complicated.
Yeah, it gets a little bit complicated. So we've been doing our homework on this, folks. I don't think we have, and it's just a matter of how it all lays out.
Look, commissioners, this is not a catch-22. If, in October 2005, you passed a resolution for Rolling Heights of '05, 862, and in the same month, '05, 863 for Dutton Road, and that was a resolution declaring it necessary to construct the sanitary sewers. I think that's sufficient enough to apply for those grants, quite frankly.
That's what I thought.
I think you've accomplished your resolution requirement.
Without having the funding there?
My opinion is that you've passed a resolution deeming it necessary to construct, and that was in October. That's all Ohio Public Works would require, and I would assume EDA would do the same.
CDBG funds are a little bit different.
Sorry, Rebecca.
I, no, but I will certainly try to- I, no, but I will certainly try to clarify that with the state when I get back to the office this afternoon, and I'll let Mr. Cortez know.
Unfortunately, I don't think we have to this afternoon. The, depending on what's done right here, if we're required to do anything with the project to move forward on that information, we're going to have to get right back in this room, send all the letters out, and then redo that just to go out and apply. Getting all that stuff together and getting letters out, it's just, you know, Commissioners, in scheduling, it usually takes about 30 days.
And I specify July 1st deadline, correct?
Mr. Conney would have to speak to his timeframes that he's working with.
July 1st isn't a deadline. That's when we can start sending the applications in. So the applications can go in at any time. If the money isn't drawn down, we could send an application in in December.
Honestly, I don't feel like time is of the essence on this project, and we have time to try to secure those funds. And my motion stands.
What was your motion, Madam Chair?
Make a motion to table?
Yes.
Or continue. That's legal. The table or continue?
You can continue. You can, well, really, you can't continue because-
Table it, and then we could bring it back off the table once we-
Or you could postpone it and set a date.
That's my motion.
You don't care to set a date? You just want to table it? Madam Chair?
We still have to send out letters regardless?
Yes, it would be, it would be a little easier if we had a date. I think that my recommendation, Commissioner, would be that we set a date to say yes or no, rather than just leaving it sit on the shelf.
Well, do we have a trustee here by any chance who could make sure we get some help with this LMI, and if the residents would cooperate? Oh, hi. I didn't even see you, Becker. Hide me behind, Hal.
I'll give it a third, it's like 60 days.
Do we need 60 days?
We'll get it done. Well, the township will assist.
Oh, hi, Pat. Didn't even see you, Becker. I'm sorry.
The township will assist Rebecca in any way that she needs her, please.
Tell them who, tell us who you are, Becky.
Oh, I'm Pat Echo. I'm the fiscal officer in Sheffield Township. I'll work with Rebecca, the trustees. We will do whatever is necessary to get whatever funding or grants we can. We're there for you guys.
Thank you, Pat.
Postpone for 30, maybe?
Well, she said July 1st to get it in, and then it takes how long to get a reply?
30 to 45 days.
30 to 45 days. So why don't we make it 60? 60 days, August 3rd?
That would be 60 days, give or take.
That would be my motion to continue this to August 3rd.
Do we have time? Do we need a time?
Same time, same station.
10:30.
Same time, same bat station.
I'll second. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Commissioners, while you go to the next one, I probably suggest that we-
Do the same thing. We don't need the discussion, do we?
No, I think that these two projects-
Go ahead, Anu.
Yeah, they pretty much run together. So my suggestion would be that you postpone this one until the same date, and then we'll make the notifications on both projects, and we'll revisit this again.
Commissioners, that will also give me the opportunity to research those questions that each of you asked, and I will get you answers back well before those meetings.
I didn't get any letters about the Dutton Road project.
It's up to you, Commissioner. Whatever your pleasure.
I would make a motion to do the same for August 3rd for item number two for Dutton Road, to continue it to August 3rd.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
One thing, make sure you tell your neighbors when somebody's coming to your door, make sure you answer it. Give them your information.
Confidential information.
We need that information so we can get you grant funding.
Number three, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Question, Mr. Cortez. There was a quite large number for unanticipated obligations for transit. Do you know what that was all about?
I'd have, I'd have to see it, Commissioner. I looked at that stuff last week because it was a short week, so it would be available for the board.
Number five? No, you didn't give me a number.
I don't know what number it was.
Number one.
It's $456,000 for unanticipated obligations.
More than likely, it's because of our increased cost under the MBT contract for, we're running those new routes that we put on. We modified the routes. I can't tell you that specifically, but I can tell you that we're only appropriating money that was budgeted. We're not giving them any additional appropriations.
It's not additional monies. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
I'd just like to note that we've appropriated an additional $9,135 to the Auditor's Dog and Kennel Fund to bring him up to the 15% of amounts allocated to the dog and kennel.
Just for an amplifying point, if I may, Commissioner, we, there may be some additional. That's 15% based upon our current revenue now. That could increase.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't want to mislead the board. He may see this again, because we do pick up additional revenue through the years, not through the years, excuse me, through the year at the kennel, and also selling additional licenses. This is just based upon current revenue figures.
And they have all the dog tags updated? They're all in? Good.
The saga is over.
Good. Till next year.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions have been taken on the summary of employees within jurisdiction. Commissioners?
Commissioners, I have a new hiring that I would like to talk to you about out at the county home, in addition to bring you up to date on a piece of litigation.
How about real estate, Jim? Do we have anything left to discuss on that?
I wish we did.
Okay.
But you know what? Let me bring you, that's a good, yes, I can also do that. And we can discuss more what objective we're trying to achieve is. So clearly, we can state that under permissible reasons, and therefore would request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting to discuss those issues.
Under Children, Under Children and Families, amend resolution 05-938, adopted November 17, 2005, approving the Help Me Grow contract reallocations with Catholic Charity Service Corp., Jones Development Center, City of Valeri, and Lorraine Department of Health, Manuel Methodist Church, Neighborhood House Association, MMRDD, effective July 1, 2005 through June 30, 2006.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Kelleher, could you help us out and explain what the breakdown and why the movement in the dollars were? Because I received some of those phone calls you told me I wouldn't receive yesterday after I talked to you.
What this amounts is, amounts to is Help Me Grow, we're funded from three different sources, Part C, GRF, General Revenue Funds, and TANF. And all that is occurring here is there's so much money left in the budget already established for these providers. Some of the providers gave forth the services, and they're way below what the proportion would be, or how I would project out. So if we can, and we, when we can, you know, inside this budget, we just simply reallocate. And for those people that are lower and not going to fulfill what was projected initially, this was done once before in November, before I came aboard. So now, we're getting near the end of the contract, and I projected out what would be spent. There's only a couple months left. So that's what you're seeing. TANF, still the same pot of money. GRF, still the same pot of money. And Part C, still the same pot of money. It's just going to be redistributed amongst the different providers that are doing the services.
Based on fulfilling state guidelines?
Yes.
That we expend the dollars where it needs to go, right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, about, about five years ago, we were having a tremendous problem getting all of our money spent by year-end. So we developed a strategy whereby, two or three times a year, we would look at the vendor contracts and see who was exhausting their revenues and providing services. Five years ago, we had some people that got allocations, didn't do anything for six or seven months, and then they tried to play catch-up. At the end, they couldn't catch up, and we were returning a tremendous amount of money to the state. This strategy is not vendor-friendly. I will tell you that right now. But it does keep them on edge. It does keep them making sure they consistently provide services throughout the year, and they watch their allocations, and they draw down their allocations. Right around this time of the year, and Ken's been wrestling with it his first time through the mill on this, you know, was, I'm talking to him, saying, you got to look at that. You got to see who hasn't spent their money, and you got to reach in there and get that money back and give it to somebody else who can spend it, so we don't return this money to the state.
Okay.
It's tough on the vendors. I'm going to tell you that. They're not happy about it. But that's why we routinely are in the top tier of getting our money onto the deck plate and out to our residents that need it, because we do, we do juggle the funding a lot. I'm not surprised you got complaints. I'm hopeful that you'll get them continuously for the next few years, because that just means we're really doing our job. Ken's new here. We, first time he got the mic. He's doing a great job out at Job Family, excuse me, at Children's Family First. He's been wrestling with a lot of issues, but I think you got your homes around and out, don't you, Ken?
I'm trying my best. And just so you know, four out of the six vendors that I spoke to yesterday, one I couldn't reach, but four out of six that I spoke to yesterday were fine with everything. Okay?
We don't really, we do the 1/12 allocation still, right, on the GRF dollars and the Part C?
We will. Now we're getting near the end, and I can actually go back. And when I get my June bill, I can go back and take a look at the money still on the table.
Yeah, the GRF dollars are so, so easy to spend, that there's very little requirements on those dollars, like the TANF dollars are very difficult dollars to spend. Then the Part Cs are the next in line, and then the GRF is where everybody likes to have GRF dollars. So they were going in and spending all their GRF dollars, then their Part Cs, and even TANF to the end. So we went to a 1/12 allocation, so that they couldn't draw out so much GRF dollars early on. And they had to, you know, they had to balance out through all three funding sources. It's quite a, it doesn't sound like a lot out there, but, you know, juggling those services is a handful. Ken's doing a great job.
Thank you, Ken.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher?
Job and Family Services, approve an agreement with Information Technologies and Training Norwalk, in the amount not to exceed $18,283.20 for the provision of access data programming services. Two proposals were received, these being the most responsive complying with specifications. Contract is effective July 1, 2006, through June 30, 2007, and can be renewed one year at the same terms with availability of funds from accounts, contract services. Authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an intern to administrative service agreement with Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the Help Me Grow program, effective July 1, 2006, through June 30, 2007, in the amount not to exceed $10,000, and authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an intern to purchase a service agreement with Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the early start component of the Help Me Grow program, using TANF funds effective July 1, 2006, through June 30, 2007, in the amount not to exceed $1,101,398, and authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an intern to various purchase of service agreements for state fiscal year '07, authorize Director of Job and Family to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form, effective July 1, 2006, through June 30, 2007. One, Lorraine City Schools, in the amount not to exceed $59,809.66 for the Fast Track GED program. Said agreement will have a one-year renewal option upon mutual consent of both parties and the availability of funds. Two bids were received. Lorraine City Schools was the most responsive complying with bid specifications. Lorraine City Schools, in the amount not to exceed $59,809.66 for the Fast Track ESOL, which is the English Speakers of Other Languages programs. Said agreement will have a one-year renewal option upon mutual consent of both parties and the availability of funds. MZM Transit, Inc., DBA MedExpress Cleveland, in the amount not to exceed $30,000 to provide non-emergency medical transportation. Said agreement will have a one-year renewal option upon mutual consent of both parties and availability of funds. Two bids were received. MedExpress was the most responsive. Lorraine County Transit, in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for non-emergency medical transportation, the dial-a-ride. And Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, in the amount not to exceed $3,000 to provide a cruiser when off-duty deputies are providing security to Job and Families.
So moved with a question. MZM Transport, do they have a business located here in the county, and they're just headquartered in Cleveland?
Commissioner, be quite candid with you, can't answer that question. Job and Family Services is always represented here.
Doug Beckman, sir.
Doug, can you come up to the mic, please?
Oh, they're flipping the coin. They're flipping it.
How do it? Joe Muller, yes, they do have a location out of Avon. I don't have the exact address, but they do have a station out of there.
Okay.
They dispatch out of there, right?
Yeah, they do, but they keep their vehicles there, too.
Okay.
So as whatever our need is, depending on the amount of clients that we are servicing for that month, they will dispatch back and forth the vehicles from Cleveland to Avon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an intern MOU with Berea's Children's Home and Family Services, Berea, and Horizon's Activity Center, North Olmsted Childcare Centers, for the purpose of defining the roles and responsibilities that they relate to the implementation of Early Learning Initiative, effective July 1, 2006, through June 30, 2007.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste District-
May I ask a question about that, please?
Sure.
Item number 17 and item number 20, both have that same phrase in, "For the purpose of defining the roles and responsibilities as they relate to the implementation of whatever it is you're talking about in both resolutions." I wonder if somebody could explain what that means. I would assume you would, that would be true of any organization that you give money to, that you would know, you would have rules and responsibilities found out in some way ahead of time. So I'd like to know why it applies specifically in these two resolutions and not to others that you do.
Because these, these two resolutions are memos of understanding, memos of cooperation. What, all, all it states is who is going to be doing what under that program. We have a couple of those that we do with Workforce Development. We have some out at Children and Family First. It just defines the parameters. It's a cooperative agreement of who will do what and who will be responsible, what part of the delivery of services.
Well, I would, as I say, I would assume you would want to have something like that for anybody that you're having this kind of relationship with, and that's why I'm puzzled that it's mentioned with some, but not with others.
Sure, I think a memorandum of understanding, though, is it's constantly negotiated, things change. Whereas we do a contract, it states what we're actually paying for. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Not really.
Okay. Next.
One more amplifying point. Sometimes the state requires us to enter into MOUs to clarify the roles of the parties operating under the funding streams. The one, the biggest one that comes to mind is the Workforce Development MOU, which has 20-something partners, and each one of them has a defined role under that funding umbrella of who does what, so you don't overlap or conflict with the service delivery. So that's the best way I can try to define it. I hope that's a little bit clearer.
Number 18, Solid Waste District.
Approve an intern electronic waste collection program contractual agreement with RET3 Job Corp., Inc., Cleveland, for scrap computer, television, and other electronic equipment collection services for the provision of refurbished computers for distribution to needy organizations in Lorraine County. Four bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, and this will be paid from actually contract services, not plan implementation. And collections are to be June 10 at Wellington Township Hall, July 29 at Alltel Service Center, Illyria, and October 28 is still to be announced.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion.
Can I have a comment for a moment?
Sure.
Mr. Billman, we just received something from the, from the Homeland, Department of Homeland Security concerning proper procedures for stripping down hard drives, and in fact, I think that Homeland Security is now recommending, rather than trying to, to reformat them, to clean them, that we destroy those hard drives. So I would like to know what we're doing with any recycled computers we take from the county. Have you met with Ernie Smith to decide what we're going to do with those hard drives?
Would you like to comment on...
I think you can comment from right there, it's not really a big comment, I'm just, have you met with Mr. Smith, and have you come up with a procedure?
No.
Will you meet with Mr. Smith and come up with a procedure?
Sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure, it was a flash bulletin that came out, apparently prior methods that people thought were cleaning those hard drives wasn't sufficient enough. I do not want to have county hard drives going into any recycling program before we, we, we at least take the advice of Homeland Security, okay? Thank you, Commissioners.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under CBCF, authorize the following employees, Mike Willetts, Executive Director, Donald Nickerson, Operations Director, Maureen Crandall, Administrative Assistance at CBCF to utilize the county's Lorraine, county's Loromet Visa Credit Card, Nat to exceed $2,000 for the year 2006. Utilization for this card is for the purchase of gas, oil, emergency purchases, and maintenance of county-owned or leased vehicles and work-related expenditures to include food, transportation, conferences, lodging, telephone, and internet service provider expenses in accordance with ORC Section 301.37.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve an intern to an agreement with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to define the relation and responsibilities between the agencies and seek Title 4E federal financial participation on behalf of Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court Juvenile Division. This is effective retroactive to July 1st, 2005 through June 30, 2007. Agreement is being retro in order to correct subgrant language from prior contracts.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, adopt general rules and regulations setting road standards and requirements for residential subdivision, street development, and even township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mend Resolution 06-326 and clarify the authorized amount of bonds or notes of the county which may be issued pursuant to the program. Said amendment to Section 9 is to include Sheffield Lake and the aggregate amount of notes and bonds of the county issued to finance in that exceed $5 million. 2.37 million of notes honor about June 7, and 2.63 million remain to be issued pursuant to this program.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an intern in engineering agreement with Sheffield Lake and authorize administrator to execute on behalf of the Board. Modify the tentative list of projects for a project total of $4,843,313 from the Engineers' Bond Fund, which includes the City of Sheffield Lake, Ferndale Avenue Phase 2 project in the amount of $213,600, and Henderson Drive in the amount of $50,000, and decrease the State Route 57 Village of Grafton to $300,000, and State Route 301 La Grange Village preliminary study that three-lane winding only justified the north of square, thus reducing the project scope to $325,000.
So moved with a question.
Second.
Are these two decreases in the Village of Grafton, and are they not ready to do their project, or why are they being reduced?
The Village of Grafton was based on an estimated cost of engineering. After we were through the qualification stage, entering the proposal stage, and then talking to the engineers that we've selected, the three we're going to get proposals from, the cost was reduced based on the conversations with them. And La Grange included in the initial agreement, a traffic study to determine where three lanes would be necessary, because they really didn't have any idea at the time. And the south end of town was taken out of there based on the traffic counts. So they were just talking about the IGA store area up at the north end of town, so the total project reduced in size.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
I think I've had enough to say this morning, and I have no further comments. Thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I need an executive session to discuss one pending litigation matter.
Commissioners report.
I think I've said enough today, too. I'll pass.
It was a very interesting meeting. Had the opportunity to attend Brad Friedel's Premier Soccer Academy ribbon-cutting last Friday, a very exciting project for Lorraine County, and had the opportunity with my fellow Commissioners to attend the two parades, City of Lorraine and City of Illyria, Don, our veterans, on Memorial Day, which was very nice, spending the day with you two.
Yes, very hot that day. He had to save that. Thank you. Tomorrow, which is Friday, June 2, we're going to be holding the Alliance's 10th anniversary party, and Rebecca, oh my, excuse me, Jennifer Demich, who works in our Office Service Division, has put together a wonderful program. This is the tree, this is the tree, Jim, that we planted behind the courthouse, okay, and this 10 years ago. And then she has made, taken a picture and put it here as a background of what the tree looks like today, and for our program tomorrow. And then we're dedicating it to Mike Whitmore, who was the first coordinator. It's just a lovely program. And then Dan Billman has got a nice plaque for us. Says June 2, Lorraine County Community Alliance, 10 years of growth and partnership here, and then it lists our partnerships here. So I'll give this to you, Hal, if you can put it on there. But thank you, Dan, for all your help. Pardon me? Real big, Jim. It's real big. And we're going to put this plaque right next to it in cement.
The one that we're cutting down?
I'm going to lay in front of it, so you can't move it.
Can we put the plaque in after we move it?
We're not moving the tree.
You're holding one vote, Patty.
Oh, that's, that's absolutely right. And I'm going to be laying in front of the tree when you come to move it. That concludes my report. Dan, better hold the pole.
I don't have anything. Work response.
I move the reading be waived.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board? Oh, we have a taker.
Elizabeth Rummix Oberlin, may I hope that we will be in the new area with its sound system next week?
No.
You may hope not. You would go hopeless.
Thank you. Because I have to say that a lot of the discussion, particularly in the early parts of the first two parts, of the first item on the agenda, were barely or not at all audible. Really?
We're sorry. We really try, but we start talking among ourselves and get the opinions from the attorney, and that's where sometimes it gets drowned out down there as we turn our heads.
I anticipate us hopefully being in the new hearing room late June or early July. They're going to be using the room tomorrow for the Alliance, and we have some of the technology working for that to support them. But we're still finishing up the technology, and we're waiting on some additional fabrication of our bench, and it's not quite done. I will promise you, though, that when we have the meetings there, you will never complain again. And I will have a control right on my desk, and the moment you look at me, and I think you're not hearing, I can up the volume on any mic in the room.
You probably can shut our mics off, too.
That I can do, too.
Uh-huh. See?
Maybe the audience should have...
There you go.
No, I'm not going that far.
So we'll, we'll have the capability of delivering much better services in that room, because that room was designed around delivering services to the people that come to this meeting. I think you'll be quite impressed when we get it going.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.